Welcome to the March 11th, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Would everybody please stand for their pledge of allegiance?
I want to pledge.
Pledge of allegiance. Do the flag.
To the republic.
One nation under God.
Invisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Under God.
Both with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to confirm that all board members and administrators are connected to this meeting. So if each person would please confirm that they can see, hear, or both when asked, please do so. Mr. Vaughn.
Both.
Thank you. Mrs. Bratz.
Both.
Mrs. Carpus.
Both.
Mr. Kreis.
Both.
Dr. Smilak.
Both.
Mr. Nucio.
Both.
And John Schweitzer is also both. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, board members and administration. But anytime during the meeting you cannot hear or see the other participants, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed. Dr. Smilak, please monitor livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if the livestreaming stops for any reason, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed. This meeting will be conducted electronically in accordance with amended substitute House Bill 197 and House Bill 404, as more specifically detailed on the notice attached to tonight's agenda. At this point, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-104, Resolution suspending requirements for in-person meetings under board bylaws.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-03-104. Any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-03-104 has been approved. At this time, we move the information to the board. Dr. Smilak, any information to the board this evening?
Sure. Everyone's favorite two topics in the Parma City School District. First, the return to school. We have publicized our plan to return full go on March 22nd. Our schools are readying themselves for that return, and they are excited to really have, you know, their full student body in class every day. PBLA will go from four days to five days, but that's the only change for them, not underscoring the importance of that change, but saying that they are not coming back. PBLA will continue to operate as it has, and that's approximately 24% of our student body. So any questions about social distancing, any questions about procedures or routines, please direct those first to your building principal. They've been working hard with their building leadership teams to make sure that we have in place safety and health procedures and policies, and that's the best place to start. Certainly, you can climb the ladder to me if you continue to have questions, but our principals are excellent at answering those. Secondly, we received the issue notice. Our issue number is issue 10. So we're excited to start campaigning for issue 10. Not that we can talk about a campaign here, but from an informational standpoint, we will start to see social media aggressively to make sure that every person has as large of an understanding of the context of this issue as possible. We will have those same short videos that we had last time. We'll have information on our website, on our Facebook page. We know that Partners in Education is a private entity. They handle the actual campaign, and certainly anyone interested in perusing their sites, we encourage you to go to partnersineducation.com for more information. Those are two of our biggest issues. We continue also to try to improve the services that we offer on a daily basis, and today we are going to talk a little bit about our art curriculum, and Mrs. Stropko will lead us through that conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Smilak. Just wait for it to go up. So we are, and I'll have just a brief presentation, we are recommending a curriculum professional development resource for K through 12 art. As you remember, last year, part of our rotation was also core curriculum, but electives as well. And so we did health and world language last year. So part of the budget was really to look at art as the rotation. I've been working with a team since November comprised of all of our art teachers at the secondary level, and then most recently, we opened it up for our elementary group. Pam, is it up here yet?
Yes, it is. Can you, you not see it?
Yeah, no.
Can't see it.
All right. We're just seeing pretty faces.
Okay, let me try this again.
Where are you looking, sir?
That was before Sean popped up.
There we go.
There we go.
So I'm on the third slide.
Okay.
So part of art curriculum is connecting it with standards, but also allowing our educators that creative lens. It's not necessarily a prescribed curriculum. So we looked at a curriculum resource that is connected to Ohio standards. Our standards are being updated this year in 2021, and fine arts graduation seal, which was added as a local seal. We also want to really look at our high school courses over the next two to three years in restructuring those courses, one, to align with ODE standards, but also to streamline the courses so that there are clear pathways connected to both visual arts and media arts. In addition, this curriculum support resource and professional development will outline our elementary and middle school courses, which we need to do as well. So just to give you an update, flex is the curriculum side, and it's really aligned with moving from projects to process and application. So in our art curriculum, we really want to focus on our instructional playbook, which is clear and coherent curriculum, and that connection to authentic literacy. And we also have that focus in our electives. So in art, it's creating, conceiving and develop ideas, producing, materializing and producing work, responding, which is understanding and developing meaning that gets to the heart of authentic literacy, and then that connection to personal and external context. So one of the things that we are missing in our comprehensive art program, not in our career intact, but our comprehensive, in which any of our kids can sign up for electives for graduation requirements, is that media component. So as we're looking at revising what our high school programming looks like, we really want to incorporate that media piece as well. So our first aspect is the flex curriculum, and this is through the Art of Education University. It's vetted through standards, specifically ODE standards. It has specific curriculum materials, and it allows our teachers to, one, look at the standards, and then, two, pull through the process. So if a teacher is looking at a lesson or a unit connected to sculpture or acrylic paints, they, there's a plethora of materials that they can pull. The goal is to pull our teachers together, to get those priority standards, to set the skills, and then to develop our student learning outcomes. Again, it's more of that process instead of, you know, a project. And so this is just an example of some of the ways that our teachers can use this resource to really build their own classes and units across horizontally, all three high schools, and then vertically as we redesign what that high school program looks like. We plan to have teams together, starting in April, to really work with this resource, and then it directly connects with Google Classroom. The thing about flex curriculum is it's for teachers and their planning. It is not a student-centered curriculum, again, used as a resource so our teachers can be creative with their craft as they work through the art standards. The other side of this is called pro-learning, and this was a huge ask. So when I got the art teachers together, you know, they said, Tiffany, we love the playbook. We love the connection to authentic literacy, but the thing that's been missing is the fact that, you know, we really don't have those specialized professional learning communities or those specialized professional development opportunities. So in addition to the flex side, the pro-learning side has on-demand modules that are connected to contact hours to renew licensure. And so all of these have to do with assessment, classroom management, technology differentiation, but also the organization and instructional strategies related to our big picture items in fine arts. And this was something that our teachers were really excited about. So on a professional learning day, we can have all of our teachers together, teaching art one, and really looking at, you know, what are our skill set for the drawing unit, and then what is some professional development that we're going to add to this so that we could become, build that shared knowledge and that capacity. In addition, this is a tool that we can use as we look to partner with the Cleveland Institute of Art and the Art Museum, which is something in our future as well. So it has both the curriculum side and then the professional development side. So the cost for this, we could have went a three-year route or six-year route. We really wanted to look at a three-year route. We have 26 teachers. We also opened it up to our elementary teachers. They were super excited about this. So it goes off of a teacher rate, and our total for a three-year license is around $55,885. They did give us a discount. So if you, you know, choose to, you know, after I recommend this, and you choose to vote this through, we will have five months of free resources that they are giving to us. So it is a three-year resource. It's something that's needed with our new standards and something that all of our teachers 100% decided that this is the direction that we want to go in. So at this time, I will open it up to questions, concerns, or comments from the board to me.
I like, John, I like the idea that when you said 100% of the people are behind this, the whole pro-learning flex curriculum. You know, I'm not, I was never involved that much in the art part of things, but, I mean, it looks, it looks amazing. I mean, it looks like a panoply of priorities and, I mean, you know, activities that happen to be in there. And, I mean, from what I can see, from what your presentation is, it seems like, you know, two thumbs up. Thank you.
Yeah, this looks like it's a wonderful, wonderful thing for our staff, and it's something that surely must have been needed for some time now. Or you wouldn't add it 100% in agreement. So kudos to you guys, and let's hope it works out for the best. I do also like the additional half a year.
Yeah, I did too.
Five months. That's pretty cool.
You know, we always try and get the shipping down. There is no shipping, so that was something that I said our team wants to start working right away, and we really could use this resource as we align our curriculum right now.
Looks good. Love it. Absolutely love it.
Thank you.
Really great. Really great.
Yeah, excellent job between this, and I know you worked on getting some of that money set aside in our savings for art thing, you know, art in our school district. So I really appreciate your dedication to not only, you know, what people would consider your typical or core curriculum, but I am a firm believer in art as part of a well-rounded student. So I much appreciate this. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Carpus kind of tipped our heads. So we'll talk at the next board meeting. We'll have a resolution specifically about the Arts Innovation Reserve, which we have worked to create as a fund to provide support and resources for enriching projects and experiences for our students in the arts. So that'll be at the next board meeting. So we're excited really to have two meetings in a row where we're focusing on an area that, quite frankly, we just haven't focused on enough in the past. And, you know, that's for any number of reasons, but we're really excited to, again, focus some attention, and more importantly, some resources to an area where we have phenomenal teachers who have made the best out of some resources. Mrs. Stropko can tell it better, but some of our arts resources are not, not from any decade that begins with a two. So we'll, we'll just, we'll just leave it at that. So, Mrs. Stropko, thanks for your work. And again, we're very, very excited to focus again on the arts.
Thank you.
I agree with everyone. I think this, this looks wonderful and is a reasonable investment in what can be a great opportunity for not just teachers, but our students, of course. And I think nowadays, adding the media arts, that's essential to, you know, the way of learning these days. So that's a great component to this new curriculum as well. So thank you for finding it and bringing it forward.
Well, thank you to our art teachers. Like I said, they've worked really hard, and, you know, the other piece, along with our art reserve institute or art institute reserve is we allocated some funds in permanent improvement to help with some of the materials and supplies. So that will be an additional presentation later on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, any other information to the board? Dr. Smilak?
No, sir. Thank you for the time and attention.
No problem. We now move to communications. Mrs. Carpus, board members, I have something.
I just wanted to commend the Normandy Culinary Program and all of the administrators and volunteers that came out, Partners in Education, to make the Progie Dinner wonderful. I mean, I volunteered, and I was like the second shift, or maybe the, either second or third shift, and by the time I got there, literally, it was so, such a well-oiled machine. I kind of stood around and talked to people. I think I ran outside one time. It was just so well-run. Everybody raved about the food, so it was fantastic.
Totally agree. I was there for a little while at the beginning, and well-oiled machine is a good way to put it. It was just running like clockwork. I mean, nothing, I don't see how it could have been better, quite honestly, and the food was good. I mean, I want to get down to the bottom line. The food was good. So congratulations and thank you to everybody that was involved.
Can I mention, Mrs. Carpus and I attended the Northeast Ohio School Boards Association Spring Virtual Meeting, and it was much shorter than they usually are, that's for sure. But I just want to draw attention to the fact that the regional manager, Reno Papalali, who had come to our meeting recently to recognize Mrs. Dendorf for, gave a beautiful tribute. This was just two days after she passed away, and he gave a really very heartwarming tribute to her, not only to her 32 years at the Parma School Board, but also recognizing her many years active in the Ohio School Boards Association, and talking about all the committees on which she served. So that was a really nice thing, especially the meeting was so short, and he spent a considerable amount of time talking about her. So it was very nice. And, you know, Karen was a quiet, unassuming kind of lady, and I think many people aren't aware of her deep devotion to Parma City Schools and the support that she's always given to students and staff, and really been there all these years. So it was, it was very nice, as of course, her wake was this weekend funeral.
So to kind of piggyback on what Cindy just said, while we were in the meeting, Reno shared a story that many, many years ago, so Karen was his partner on the federal committee, so they would go to DC, and they would travel back and forth and work closely with their, you know, the US House of Representatives and, you know, our local congresspeople here, and he told the story of one time she just burst into Dennis Kucinich's office and told him, you can do better, and I demand you do better for these kids, and you can come up with a better funding formula. And I just think of her sitting in the meetings, and she, like Cindy said, was often so quiet, but she definitely fought for these kids and for public education from day one until the very end, so.
Yeah. John, are you going to speak?
Yeah.
I was just, I was just going to quickly mention.
I'll be the last one in the group.
I don't want to burst your bubble, but I just, I just would wish that more people would understand what Karen did for the community and what service she provided. She poured her heart and soul into Parma City School District and what was important for kids. And I think more people should follow that avenue. I mean, it'd really, excuse me, it'd really be a bonus worldwide. That's, that's all I got.
And the final piggyback here. I was fortunate enough to be the only non-family member at the service yesterday as they asked me if I would be able to attend, and hearing through the eulogies, all the children and grandchildren and the things she's done, and all the lives she has touched. I mean, it was, it was hard to sit through. I mean, I literally had to grab a couple of Kleenex myself. She's certainly by everyone, family, community, the schools, all the people that she has touched throughout her life. She will certainly be missed. Rest in peace, Karen. Anybody else? Treasurer?
I do not have anything.
Okay, then I move to adopt Resolution. Do we have any amendments?
We do not.
Okay, before I skip that part. Then at this point, we open the meeting to the public to address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have anybody that wishes that sent in anything to address the agenda items?
We have one item.
End.
That's at the end.
That's it. I'm sorry. You're correct. I'm sorry. It's at the end.
Okay. And I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-106, Approval of the Written Record of Proceedings from the February 25th, 2021 Regular Board of Education Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-03-106. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-03-106 has been approved. And that moves us to curriculum with Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-107, granting authority to enter into a primary service agreement, city exempted village and school districts Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the 2021, 2022, and the 2022 and 2023 school years as per the ORC 3313- or .843.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Resolution 2021-03-107. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 2021-03-107 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-108, Approval of the K-12 Digital Art Curriculum and Professional Development.
Second. We have a motion and a second for 2021-03-108. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-03-108 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes curriculum for this evening.
Thank you very much. Business, Mr. Kreis? We do not have any action items under business tonight unless another member has anything to discuss. This would conclude business. Thank you. How about finance?
Finance. Here we go. I move, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-109, Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer.
Second. A motion and a second for 2021-03-109. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-03-109 has been approved. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-110, Approval of the February 2021 Financial Report.
Second.
And motion and a second for Resolution 2021-03-110. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-03-110 has been approved. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-111, Ratification of Investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-03-111. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-03-111 has been approved. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-112, Approval of Supplemental Appropriations.
Second.
And motion and a second for 2021-03-112. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-03-112 has been approved. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-113, Acceptance of Contributions and Donations.
Second.
A motion and a second for 2021-03-113. Questions or comments?
No, but I would like to continually say thank you to those who remember Parma City School District, and that's awesome donations there, the masks, the special mask for students that throw a park, and the 150 masks for staff in Hillside. That's a very generous and very thoughtful gift. Thank you.
Ditto. I thank you to anybody that keeps the Parma City Schools in mind, and those are very needed safety issues. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-03-113 has been approved. Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. Any legislation this evening, Mrs. Carpus?
Nothing really to note unless, Mrs. Bratz, do you have anything that came down that I missed?
I don't think so.
All right, but I think we're good for tonight.
Okay, then we go to Mrs. Bratz for Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to the adoption of Resolution 2021-03-114, Approval of the following certificated exhibits, Confirmation of Certain Amounts, Approval of Certificated Non-Compensated Leave of Absence, Acceptance of Certificated Resignation, Confirmation of Supplemental Appointment.
I have a motion and a second for 2021-03-114. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 2021-03-114 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-03-115, Creation of Career and College Readiness Coordinator Position and Adoption of Job Description.
Second.
A motion and a second for 2021-03-115. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Yes. 2021-03-115 has been approved.
Mr. Schweitzer, can I just point out always in the interest of fiscal responsibility, this is not an ad. This is simply a reclassification of a job description. I want to be real clear, we anticipate no changes in terms of even personnel who's going to have that role. But wanted to clarify the, the new job responsibilities and that's the reason for the change.
Thank you. Just modernizing things, I assume.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
I move, I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-03-116, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointment replacement, confirmation of change of classified assignments, approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence, approval of classified stipend, confirmation of classified resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-03-116. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-03-116 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-03-117, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-03-117. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-03-117 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-03-118, approval of change in substitute salary rate.
Second.
A motion and a second for 2021-03-118. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-03-118 has been approved.
Unless any other board members have anything they would like to discuss this evening, this concludes human resources.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bratz. Any policy issues tonight, Mrs. Carpus?
No, there are none, but I suspect we will have some first readings after the next policy meeting.
Thank you very much. Any further information this evening requested by the board? At this time, then we have the opportunity to have questions and concerns read into the record. And from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, we have one?
Yes.
Okay, I will read this verbatim into the record. If we have an answer this evening, we will answer it. If not, we will get back to the person and hopefully we'll have an answer. This is from Edward Acocella, I believe, A-C-O-C-E-L-L-A, 9750 Parkland Drive, Parma, Ohio. I will read this verbatim. What can you tell me about deep equity and the Parma schools? Has it been installed, considered, declined, or unfamiliar? Where are we? That is in the, that's the entirety.
And we, we definitely appreciate the, the, the ask there by the residents. We have not considered deep equity as a program that we want to pursue. I, I looked into it because quite frankly, I'd never heard of it. And it, it was a pretty controversial program that was implemented on some what looked to be Western school districts. And really was, was quite offensive in, in some instances. Not to say everyone was offended, but definitely raised the ire of some communities that were instituting that. Definitely aligned with our, our mission, which is to embrace all students and make sure that everyone is having a, you know, very positive experience and that we're all aware of individual student needs. So we are having really good conversations with our Embrace All Committee about how to continue professional development and how to make sure that our, our, our staff is, is aware of, of different needs and different perspectives and really just making sure that, again, we, we are able to embrace all of our students in whatever form or shape or mood or, or, or anything else they come to us in. But deep equity is not an avenue that we will at all pursue to accomplish that mission.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smilek. So it has been read into the record and a response has been given. Any other questions or comments this evening? I then move to adopt resolution 2021-03-120 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021-03-120. Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-03-120 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.